Beer board meeting, call to order please. Roll call.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrow. Councilman Stiney.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilman Fair.
Present.
Here. Do you hear a motion for the review and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Under new business, we have a request for Charles Nifong, Jr. Capital Retail LLC, Rocky Top Number 938. This is the one outside of Mariners Point at 950 Charles G. Severs Boulevard for Class B off-premise beer permit. Has anybody called in yet?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve? What I recommend is that we push this off for another 30 days for our May meeting. Motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, I can't make the motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
So what would that mean for the 15-day period there that there's overlap?
Now, your May meeting is May 18th. It's early because May 20th, our regular schedule is on the table day.
I would think, Zach, that someone else would have to be present in the location during that period of time where there's that gap in order to sell beer. Is that correct, Gina?
It's the facility, right? The permit is given to the facility, but the issue is, is that the person that is, that's the manager, there's some concerns or questions there. So I mean, I hate that this has happened, but at the same time, I would have thought the folks there would have had maybe a better candidate available.
And the temporary ends today?
It does, but I can extend it 15 days.
15 days.
They haven't quite done 15 yet. They've issued the temporary on the 16th.
I mean, I think that it's wise to delay it 30 days while we get some better answers, but I just was trying to figure out on day 15 when it runs out, I know we're meeting May 18th, but there's going to be a period.
There's going to be two days there because there's 30 days in April. So you said you did it on 16th, so 30 days is the 16th of May.
Okay.
And we don't meet until the 18th, so there is two days.
Right.
No beer sales.
No beer sales.
Well, we're not, we're not clear on that because there could be somebody else coming in that could, you would think, to be able to do that, right?
I'll confirm the closing, actual closing date, which I believe was the 16th, but it's the 18th, that's the number of days.
Okay. Any more discussion? So the motion is to, to push back the request for until our May meeting?
Motion.
ET second.
ET second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Motion to adjourn the beer board meeting? Means adjourned, open up the regular meeting. Roll call please.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrow. Councilman Stiney.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilman Fair.
Here.
Here. Do you hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Please.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. The prayer this afternoon will be given by Councilman McBride. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Father, thank you for this day, thank you for the opportunity you've given us to serve you and to serve our city. I pray, dear God, for the protection of our city and its workers and its residents, and I pray for wisdom now as we discuss the business. Thank you again for your love for us, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Jim. Do you hear a motion for the review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated February 24th, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We'll pass the grievances. Do we have anything called in, Roger? So what we can do for those few people that are watching this right now, you can call in, is there a number they can call in, 0424?
No, we did it just by email. They hit the email by four o'clock, 4:30 Friday, if anybody had anything.
Okay, well, if somebody has any questions right now as they're talking, you can text me at 310-0633 and we'll be happy to address this. Now, this is replay, I won't be able to call you back, we won't be able to address it, but today we can. So moving on, communications from the mayor. Just a couple of things I wanted to talk, I have some board appointments, but also just talking about where we're at today. I mean, it's something that few generations experience and everybody, we know what we're going through, probably not going to be over until we get a vaccine, but my point in bringing this up is as we start letting the restrictions, you know, opening up the city and state, you know, slowly, is just use common sense, because it's going to take everybody to do this. So again, no touching, social distancing, keep your hands washed, and there's going to be more restaurants opening up right now. If the restaurants are, you feel like you don't feel comfortable with it or if it's too busy, just go somewhere else or go back home because it just takes one bad lack of judgment to, you know, we're going to be right back where we were, you know, six weeks ago. So just please, please keep that in mind. Does anybody want to say anything else about that? It's not.
I mean, I would also think though that don't give in to fear would be, as a councilman, what I would want to tell our people. I think, and I agree with the mayor, we need to use common sense and don't throw your common sense out the door. I, for one, personally and privately, you know, I trust God, but I don't tempt him and I don't test him. And so I try to use that as my guidance about, you know, how to, how to conduct myself during this time period, and I want to do as much as we can for our small businesses. My wife owns a small business, several of us at this table own small businesses, and so I want our people to know that we're doing everything we can to get you open as fast as we can. I don't take the Constitution and the Bill of Rights there enumerated very lightly. I don't think that those men gathered around in 1776 and said, "This is in effect until somebody gets sick," right? So people have constitutional rights that, that we have to be respectful of, and I would want, and I'm just one of many here today, but my, my voice would be, let's get back to work and as soon as we can, as responsibly as we can, and I think that's what you're...
Yeah, no, you said it much better than I did, but you know, as a, as a Christian, we're taught to be faithful, not fearful, but as you said, in a way, you've got to be smart.
Right.
Like, don't tip, don't tempt the good Lord.
Trust, but don't tempt, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, so, well said. So my board appointments, let's have a few. Under CUB, Dr. Penny Harrell has asked to be taken off Clinton Utilities Board, certainly appreciate her time on that. I'd like to replace her with Steve Long to continue her term, which ends July 1st, 2023. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? I try to, I try to have a good mix, especially on the CUB board, and you know, people bring different things to the table, and I really like Steve's, his experience. He was in human resources entire career at Y-12, and so I think that's one area that wasn't, I mean, could really add to that board, and he's, he's a pretty good guy, too. I think he'll do a good job for the city, so. Without any discussion, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. It's been a couple of months since I've done that. Also, for the Clinton Port Authority, I'd like to reappoint Walter Porter. His term will be ending February 2030. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. That's all I have, thank you. City School Board Report, I'm going to do Kelly's part here. This is on the Budget Number Three, and just to highlight what this is, the recommended budget amendment in GP School Fund increased revenue and transfers by 1.416, let me say it again, $1,416,122. And this is from the property tax and sales tax increase, the BNP growth, and city transfer in a million-dollar loan for the addition for the school at Clinton Elementary and also for the Chromebooks. The recommended budget amendment in GP School Fund net increase with the same dollar amount, well, it's not the same dollar amount, it's $1,476,818, and that includes $73,500 increase in special ed aids, $18,000 increase in guidance salary for paid leave, $55,000 increase in support services salary and benefit allocation, $60,000 increase in regular education equipment for Chrome, regular education equipment for Chromebooks, $65,000 increase of Safe Schools equipment for crisis alert systems, and 1.120, $1,120,000 net increase of the capital project that's taking place at Clinton Elementary. And last but not least, $40,000 decrease in transfer to city for loan payments to be made on June 30th of 2020. Do you hear a motion for approval of Budget Number Three?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harrow. Councilman Stiney.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Yes.
Councilman Fair.
Yes.
Mayor Burton.
Yes, motion passes. Some of the updates from the school also, I won't read every single word of this, but just a couple of points. The parking lot behind Clinton Elementary School is being completed, in the process of putting up wooden fence on the end of the lot, and they'll, they'll be doing some landscaping, too, on that strip on Marshall. The Clinton Elementary School expansion project is underway, it's on the lower parking lot area. The estimated cost of rock removals, $30,000, will be covered in the contingency allowance. The new estimated date, completion date, will be August 7th, so that'd be really good timing for starting school back up. This is one thing I wanted to talk to you about, ET, you can talk a little bit about this, too. Serving approximately 650 meals daily as part of the Clinton City School System Closing Meal Program. This includes both breakfast and lunch. Each Friday, serve meals, as well as weekends, averaging approximately 25 meals on Friday, 2,500 meals on Friday. This has been a huge blessing to me and in our community, which I certainly agree with that. The federal waiver goes through June 30th, and we, they plan on continuing this service as long as the waiver is in effect. Appreciate Aramark, as well as the staff, community volunteers that have worked to make this happen. So we are serving meals in North Clinton from 10:00 to 1:00, and South Clinton from 12:00 to 12:30 each weekday in a drive-through format. Would you like to say a couple of words about that, ET?
Yes, Friday, I think the young man, Jeremy, I don't know his last name, but he pretty much puts the meal orders together, makes sure they get to the school okay, preparation of food and distributed daily. Four states, I think Kentucky, Tennessee, Georgia, and Alabama, Clinton City Schools, we voted the second-best distribute and preparation of all foods in this virus time, so that's a pretty neat deal. We just went over 31,000 meals served over 29 days, so. Pretty neat deal, and we're seeing new faces show up, which shows me a little bit of pinch going on with different individuals, and of course, it's available to anybody, not just Clinton City, but Anderson County kids. We've had kids come from Oak Ridge every day, so it's open to anyone zero to 18, and it's a pretty neat deal to see the faces and smiles, and the kids really see, want to see their teachers again, and teachers come, and I think your wife is working today, and the kids get to see those faces again, it's a pretty neat deal.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I know you're there every day, too.
I love it.
Thank you and all the volunteers.
If I can help somebody, it's, that's what I like to do.
Yeah, amen. Good job. Just a couple other points, the school will be holding kindergarten registration at the individual schools on May 13th and 14th. Parents may call the central office to set up an individual appointment to complete that registration. Also, accepting pre-K applications for North Clinton Elementary School at the central office, open from, daily from 8:00 to 3:30 on weekdays. And talking about the extended closures have pushed, you know, thinking of educators, and I want to say, I don't want to read all this, but I think the schools have done a great job as far as keeping the kids engaged. I've heard a lot of parents saying, man, they have a brand-new respect for teachers, that's for sure, and, but they're keeping the kids busy, and hopefully they won't miss too much of that learning that they're missing in the classroom setting.
That's the concern right there.
Yeah, yeah. Sixth grade graduation also, they want to try to hold something as far as graduation at some point, and Kelly said they'll be able to communicate that as soon as it's scheduled, so I know, have they come out with a date yet for high school?
June 26th.
June 26th, and that's going to be at the football field, right?
Football field.
Okay, all right. Do we have a time on that? Do they have a time yet?
I think seven.
Okay, okay. And also, their next school board meeting will be held May 14th, so just to start the, completing the second reading of their budget for 2020 and 2021, so. Again, any questions, please send those to Kelly.
Any word on the Teacher of the Year banquet that was supposed to be Monday, have they postponed it or?
Does that mean?
Yeah, as far as I know, it's been canceled.
Yeah.
Cancelled? Okay.
So moving on, Clinton Regional Planning Commission Report, Councilman Gann.
We've basically been inactive, primarily anything that has come up has been dealt with by the city manager. The only thing I think that we dealt with, and it was done by email, was an entrance to the Aspire Park, they wanted to change one aspect of it, and by email, we voted to, to change that. I think they had a roundabout and wanted a more direct route, but we, that was, Kelly, that was six weeks ago. So we haven't met since then.
So you plan on meeting in May?
I would say that would depend upon...
Is it going to be like, is it going to be a closed meeting like this?
Close case, probably yes, we'll have to wait and see what's going to...
Yeah, it's contingent upon plans.
Yeah. You know, typically, I mean, you don't have just, just see wherever's on the agenda usually shows up, so.
We have a city court next week, we've come up with a plan red, of course, we've got to have it approved by the Supreme Court tomorrow, but we have a limit to about 20 chairs out here, and that still gives us social distancing.
Okay.
I think we can do that.
When are you going to hear about the court?
We have to submit a plan by noon tomorrow, and we should know something pretty soon.
Does court's next Tuesday?
We have to schedule the next two Tuesdays after tomorrow.
Okay, all right. Any, any questions for Councilman Gann? Thanks, Larry. Clinton Utilities Board Report, Councilman Fair.
So last month, we canceled our board meeting. We have been in communication, though, with general manager. General manager and myself have been communicating weekly. I think CUB's put in a lot of best practices when it comes to how they're managing their, their crews, making sure, similar to what I think the fire and, and the police are doing here, too, they're being real thoughtful about how we manage our, our people in light of making sure that if someone would get sick, that it didn't shut down entire crews or shut down entire, you know, operations. I've asked the general manager to also, Mr. Fay, to communicate at least monthly with, with local governments to make sure that we're communicating what we're doing, and so we can offer best practices with, with folks, and that's taken place. We are currently in very good financial shape. They are working with individuals that can't pay their, pay their electric bill right now, and they're, they're going through that. Surprisingly, we're, I don't know if surprisingly is the right word, but it's unprecedented times for all utilities, and at some point, you know, it's important that we all get back to work, especially if those industrial, those industrial sites get back to work, because they, they churn the electricity, which pays a lot of the bills. We are meeting next month, we are going to socially distance as we are here, and we will be open to the public, and we will have a procedure in place if, we don't have a lot of public show up at, at our meetings, so I don't anticipate it being a problem. Any questions?
Any questions for Zach?
I'll just mention in talking to the general manager, a lot of people don't know, but he was sharing with me how many crews they sent to Middle Tennessee to help with their disaster and how many to Cleveland, and CUB is well-known for being very, very friendly to help other systems in times of emergency. And I know, for example, I think one, one weekend, he had 12 crews out to other areas to help those folks out.
That's correct.
Well, I wouldn't expect anything less from Greg or, or CUB. Did he talk, has Greg talked to you more about, I mean, forecasting, they see a decline in, in revenue coming in with, with all this going on?
I would think, I'm speaking for, for Dudley and Greg at this point, and we haven't had those communications yet, but I don't see how it can, you know, I don't, I mean, with, with what's taken place.
Well, I kind of, kind of see, because a lot of the, and again, I may be wrong, but, you know, with the SL and some other, you know, laying off some people, I mean, so they're not, they don't have the, the lights on as much, that's going to be probably where the biggest hit's going to be, I would imagine. So we'll just wait and see, wait and see. Anything else for Zach? Thanks, Zach. Under Other Boards and Committee Reports, Larry, do you have anything?
None that I know of.
I mean, nobody's meeting right now, so.
Well, TPO is meeting, we're meeting by Zoom, which is an experience, but we're meeting in, and a number of projects are still moving on, still moving on the, on the bridge, the number of, number of other projects are under consideration, and also the 122 exit up there. And Roger and I were talking about the fact, I've been asked by several people what's holding that project up, and it's primarily getting the support for traffic lights at the intersection, and it looked like they're going to get those till August or September, so that project's kind of on hold, standby for now, but the bridge...
As far as getting new lights?
They're getting the, the orange style, and they've had to order manufacturing until this is six months, once they order it.
As for the exit, and the bridge is moving out.
Something good.
Excuse me, what about the biodock? It seems to have, unless the sandblasting underneath is about the only thing.
Right now, it's pretty much, I think, that project's on hold, there's been some disagreement between T9 and the contractor, and they've not come to a new agreement yet, and they're going to start work back.
I know on the, on the quarterly report I just gave, city manager, I think it's, it's scheduled to be completed this month, but they run into some roadblocks.
They'll finish the Green Bridge before they finish that, I'd bet money on it. Anything else? Thanks, Larry, and Roger. Speaking of Roger, General Government Report, Ms. Hough.
Thank you, Mayor. Just some updates to kind of where we are here with the city government. City Hall, the lobby is closed to the public, but all offices and departments are open for business. Inspections by codes is being conducted with a minimum personal contact. We're hoping probably next Monday to reopen the lobby with some restrictions, but we're hoping to get that done. Community Center is closed to the public, all programs and activities are either canceled or postponed. Ballfield Playgrounds and public restrooms are closed, walking trails and other open spaces in the parks are open. The Police and Fire Department are responding to all emergency calls, other calls for service are answered according to recommended response guidelines. The Public Works Department is open and providing normal services. Monday, May the 4th, will be the spring cleanup. Items have to be at the curb by 7:30 a.m., you can go to our website to get the list of the items. That was canceled from the April date that it was original, but we will try to do it, go ahead and do it in May. Finance, Gail?
You've got your sales tax report, keep in mind that those are February sales, numbers still look good. The city was down a little over 3.5%, but the county overall was up a little over 6%. So we're still close to 3% overall. Next month is when we'll see the first possible decline from the COVID-19, about half a month, and it's, it's a month by month, there's no way we can estimate. Property taxes, as of Friday, we collected about 97%. So collections are very good on property tax. If you look at our total overall, our revenues are at 80-something percent, expenditures, I mean, our numbers look really good right now, but we do expect to see some, some changes in that prior to the end of the, end of the year. Our business tax, as you may know, was delayed, those that are calendar year, which is the majority of businesses, was delayed from 4:15 due date to 6:15 due date. We normally get well over 50% of our budgeted number for business tax in in May. We will not see that coming until July, and I expect, there could be some delays in there, some people may still not be able to file in July, but we'll see that change. Otherwise, we're still working on budget for next year and continuing to tweak.
Gail, can you, and maybe Roger, talk a little bit about that, looking, looking forward as far as the, because everybody kind of know, I think you've had the individual conversations, but it'd be good to know for our, for our viewers also, what we're looking at.
Seven weeks ago, we had our final budget meeting with department heads, me and Gail topped the next day, it was probably one of the best and easiest budget cycles that we had. Two weeks later, everything got shut down. Two weeks ago, we really started seeing some numbers coming in from TML and the Comptroller's Office, putting out recommendations, so we have been for the last two weeks, including today, tweaking the budget on expenditures, pretty much, we've already cut any non-incessual spending for the rest of this year. We're looking at some reductions in several line items, herring freezes, no salary adjustment increases right now, so we're taking a lot of steps. We hope by charter, we'll have a document submitted to you by Friday, but it'll be a full document, it'll probably change it up till we pass it in June for second reading, and maybe on even further than that. I mean, we've got, it's really October 1st to set some things before we have to send it to the comptroller, but it has become very interesting.
Any other questions for Gail?
I do. In December, I think, on the local option sales tax, there was a big decrease there, and it had something to do with online, something, do you, is my memory right on that?
Now, Anderson County itself had a big jump.
The county had a jump, but the city had a dip.
Right.
And there were some questions upon that time of presentation. Did we ever get any of those questions answered?
Well, the increases that you're seeing, particularly at a county level, when I say county, the unincorporated area, we have been told as a result of the Wayfair, in other words, the change in how sales tax is now distributed from out-of-state sales, now, I think that went into effect in October, which means we wouldn't see it until December. So now, instead of, there was a formula at the state level, now, when you ship in from out-of-state, it's supposed to go wherever that package is delivered, so the counties, that's where the counties are seeing a boost in that.
So like, we talked about this, like, the 37716 zip code, is that where we've got probably, we're not, like, if it comes to my house, I live in the city, but I have the same zip code as somebody that lives on Laurel Road or Sulphur Springs or another part of the county. So is that what's causing us an issue?
Well, I'm being told there is no issue, and, and there's really not much of a way. We, we get a lump sum number as far as out-of-state, so we have no way of knowing. My talks with the state tell me that they base that on GPS, so it should pick up the fact that you...
That the package ended up inside Clinton City limits, so therefore...
That's what I am told.
Okay, it's based, not based on zip code, because we talked about that.
No, it's not, unless they're using the four-digit add-on to, I don't know if that's how they, I don't know.
But if it goes in, if it's shipped to Clinton?
It's supposed to be, we receive it.
Then, do we receive the 100% of it or a percentage of that, and county gets a percentage also?
No, we get, we get it from the local options.
That doesn't make, that doesn't make any sense how that happened, then, because I don't see how...
We did that by the dip.
They would have, we, we had that dip and they had such a strong number.
Well, but before, and I may be wrong, but the distribution before for out-of-state sales was handled at the state level.
Okay.
And it was not based on where it went. It was, it was split among cities, somehow a formula, so it was not based on where it went. So that's a complete change. So now, I mean, if you look at Anderson County and all unincorporated areas, that's a pretty large area, so, and based on the change in distribution, but bottom line, there's no way for us to verify or check that except to talk to the state and go by what they tell us.
Okay, now, online is only going to be more and more of an issue, I think, and I, especially these last several months, is this something that TML can help us with? I mean, like, somebody came up with this formula. Well, I mean, that probably was a smart person and a good person, but was it a fair formula?[1758.32] formula? Did we go back and review it?
Well, now, there's, now it isn't a formula, now it is supposed to be based somehow as...
But, but we're, but again, we don't, how do we know that we're, I mean, it's almost like the cities dealing, like, I deal with insurance companies all the time in my line of work. I really have no recourse. I ask them a question, they tell me what they want to tell me, there's really not a second level for me to go ask.
That's pretty much the way it is at the Tennessee Department of Revenue.
That's kind of what I figured, so this is your all's PBM.
Well, I was wondering, during that same month, do you remember how Oak Ridge looked? But maybe it's, probably don't, but you might want to look, because that just seems, you think, as the ship rises, we all rise.
We have seen I...
On, on that particular tax.
I track each city, and the county, and overall, and none of the cities are seeing the increases in the, like, rural Anderson County is, with the exception, most of the time of Oak Ridge, but you would expect that over the last year or so.
Because of their development.
Because of their development down there. But, if you look at everybody else, it was pretty, pretty much the same, except for rural county.
Okay.
But you would think outside of the cities and, in the county, that the population isn't that great. I mean, it might be maybe 30 or 40, maybe 30,000? Outside of the cities that, that's here? I mean, outside of Norris and, and Oliver Springs, and, and Rocky Top, and Oak Ridge, and Clinton, that's got to be at least 50,000. I think the county's only 75, isn't it?
Seventy-five, somewhere between 75 and 80,000, about 75.
So, that's my, my point, that's just the numbers don't, anyway, I know, between you and Gina, you're going to find it, it's there.
We keep watching it, but...
Yeah, yeah. Get her to send all this, she'll be on, she'll be on somebody. Believe me, you want Gina on you, my goodness.
You've also got your audit planning letter, it's just for your information from the auditors, they will start in June this year, a little bit later, normally they come in in April, but they're coming in in June to do their preliminary work, and waiting to see how that's going to be, in, in person, or depending upon where we stand.
Any other questions for Gail?
From an audit standpoint, is it good to, I mean, do we bid that out? From an audit standpoint, do we bid that out every so often? I mean, is it, I'm just curious, is it something that you, do you create a precedent if you have the same auditors year after year after year? Even though you have different people, you have the same entity.
We have not RFP'd it since I've been, I mean, we did, you know, when I came in, we've not done it since.
I mean, this year, we may have gone too far, and they've gone too long, we don't need to do that, and again, I have nothing, those folks seem very nice, very thorough, but I, I would like to request that next year, we RFP that, I don't know if that needs to be done, but, and I may be, I don't know how everybody else feels, but...
We can certainly take a look at it. I, I understand, I, I think that's the issue we had before.
It is the issue we had before.
But, um, even though we've been very satisfied with this group, it might be good.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Anything else for Gail?
Thank you, Mayor. Public Works Department, for many years, has routinely rented a bulldozer several times a year to maintain the brush at our Hidden Valley Road property. The volume of brush and leaves collected detects the rental frequency, which can be up to six times per year. Also, in recent years, we have undertaken several small construction and other repair projects, which is required as to use rental equipment. We have an opportunity to purchase a used John Deere 700K bulldozer at a local dealer at a reasonable cost. The purchase is allowable within our purchasing guidelines, we would therefore request confirmation of the city manager's prior authorization to purchase the John Deere bulldozer from Bayless Equipment Sales Incorporated, a total of $48,000.
Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion, second. Any further discussion?
I have a question. I'm not, I usually vote for every piece of equipment, because I think, for years, we didn't have good equipment. Is this something that you think is with, you're talking about economic forecasting, and I know we have the money, and I know everything's there, and we, we've set the money aside for things just like this, but based on what you've learned the last two to three weeks, I'm assuming you still think this is an okay idea?
It is, because we have to rent it, um, just the job on Eagle Ben.
Oh, I'm sure they're incredible.
It was like 17, 18,000 dollars just for that one project, so it, it would probably over a two-year period be a cost savings versus them renting it. Okay, so it'd be...
And, um, to back up Jim's point, too, I, I think, because this has been in the works for two or three months, too, I think moving forward for the next, we need to, we need to, I know this is a little special, because we use it anyway, but this would be very, very, very conservative as far as what we're going to be purchasing outside of what our budget is.
Right, the only other thing, this was a budgeted item, and actually, Chief Becker's done a good job. We've got budgeted 200,000 for four patrol cars, but Chief is going to change that, we've got two detective cars that are 2002 models, he's got, uh, two, um, state contract vehicles that are 25,000 apiece, we'll only be spending 50 of that 200,000. And pretty much, yes, rest of the, the, at least the rest of this fiscal year into deck will be real essentials on.
Conservative.
Roger, do you have a ballpark on that, four to six times per year, what that we've got, what the cost is?
I do not.
Yeah.
For the what?
Well...
We spend over 20,000 a year, and depending upon the project that he's doing.
Sure. Just wanted everybody to hear. Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
The only other thing I got, Mayor, one update on the J.C. Park outdoor pool, and I was going to do that last month, about halfway through last summer, we started getting, losing about 10,000 gallons of water a day. We knew it was either the liner or the plumbing. Uh, come to find out, we had a company come in the end of February, did some testing on, on both, we've actually got leaks in both the plumbing system, which was last updated in 1985. The liner was put in in 2002, which was a 10-year liner, which we've got 18 years out of it. Estimated cost for repairs is 342,875 dollars. What our thought staff was looking at, the LPRF grant program was supposed to be announced March, end of March, they were coming out with a new grant cycle, which all that's got delayed. So, it really gives us more time to look at it, but our thought process is, last year's attendance was averaged 60 people a day, year before that was just slightly higher. 15 years ago, it averaged about 250 a day. 20 years ago, it averaged as much as 400 a day. So, we're looking at our options, possibly apply, we're definitely applying for the grant, but we're looking at options, do we remodel the pool, which is very expensive? Last year's, last year's expenses was 26,907 dollars, and we took in 11,097 dollars. So, it's, it's a loser, which it's always been a losing facility, but usually not that bad. I mean, attendance has dropped way off, so our thought process is, we're looking at possibly turning it into a splash pad. The money would basically be about the same, which we apply for a grant, that we'd get half of it, that probably wouldn't happen till summer of 2021, uh, that we could do that, but our recommendation is probably will be to do that, but we're still looking at our options, but it will not be open this summer due to plumbing and other issues.
Might not have been open anyway.
Right now, the recommendation is not to open pools or splash pads.
Well, what's tough about that, too, is, is, um, you know, school's starting so early now, I mean, it's like, first, first week in August, it's closed, pool's closed.
And that's a lot of the things we're looking at. We're only open 10 weeks, our little splash pad, we open it usually May through, depending on the weather, October, so a splash pad would get much more use out of it, and then the daily cost would be very minimal.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions for Roger?
You had on the, are you done?
Yes, I'm done, that's all I'm...
You, you had on the agenda also football stadium improvements?
Yes.
What's, let's publicly let folks know kind of the timeline.
As per our contract with the county, any major renovation that we've always done was a 50/50 project between the City of Clinton and Anderson County Schools. We've done several of them over the years, baseball field, a couple, a couple different, um, projects up there, we've done one at the football field in '08. The plan was, was to do another phase to the football field, it's kind of been put on hold a couple of years, because the high school was talking about maybe building a stadium on Dragon Drive, which got, I think, is nixed right now, they're not going to do it. Um, so we approached them with the opportunity, before all of this pandemic happened, to partner in 50/50 on renovating, um, let's, new locker rooms, new concession for the band, and new metal bleachers on the visitor's side. Uh, the school board did vote, I guess it was in their April meeting, that they did not want to partner and do the project, so we've kind of just dropped it.
And I have spoken to some folks, it's called me about it, and I don't know that people, and a lot of folks don't understand, the high school is a county school, but yet this is a city property.
Right.
And so, they, the thought process is, is that it's a, I guess, it's the city to, to, to do all this, but the city, basically, Clinton City, does not have a high school. It is a county school that we have partnered with for years, and why that was ever that way, why did our forefathers not go to the high school business years ago, I don't know, but that was a decision that was made years ago. But I know the two or three people that's come to me, when I've said, you know, really, that's not, Clinton High School is a county school, we are the city, so we're not in the high school business. Now, we like partnering, and we want to be good partners, and we like for them to be successful, but it's two different entities. The two folks that I spoke to, two families I spoke to, didn't have any idea.
Well, that, and also, I, I've got this a lot over the years, we do rent the facilities to them, this year it was $90,000, but that's only for the maintenance and upkeep of the facility. We charge them basically, well, we don't charge them basically what, what it costs us, we actually reduced that through some negotiations two years ago. This year, we charge $90,000, but that's for the maintenance of the football field, baseball field, tennis courts, softball field, indoor swimming pool, and not just for Clinton High School, it's for Clinton High School, Clinton Middle School, and part of it's Anderson County High School. So, there's, there's several usages there, and you're talking, you know, softball, you got middle school and high school uses, same with baseball, they've got both, football, you know, several, several...
So, the bottom line is, when those lights are on, or when there's upkeep, or there's painting, or there's re-sowing of grass, the city's doing that. If that, that light bill down there is in the city of Clinton's name, not in Clinton High School's name.
Correct.
And so, that, our purpose is, we, and we are subsidizing it some, and we, we're fine with subsidizing it some, is, that's, that's kind of been our history.
Correct.
But I don't know that a lot of folks understand that.
True.
Good points.
Has there been, um, because I don't think we got to meet since, since we received some, some correspondence from some constituents in regards to, um, the football field, um, has there been any discussions about allowing the county to purchase the football field from us, or the school system purchased the footballs?
There has been some over the years, I don't know how serious, I've, I've never had that serious talk with them, but I mean, that's always an option with some of the facilities. You know, some of them, we couldn't, J.C. Park, the ballfield's up there, were given to us in early 1930s, with a lot of stipulations, we, there's a deed restriction on it. Lakefront Park, same thing, we couldn't there, because if you split the, the girl softball field, really from third base to first base, going all the way to the river, that left-hand part is actually TVA land that we're the permanent recreation managers of. So, some of them you could, some of them you couldn't.
Well, I think the better approach is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Roger, but like, the football field, we've offered to rent it to them, like a dollar a year deal, and they didn't want that.
Yeah, so they would have the responsibility for the upkeep, yeah.
So, I think the people that are at a certain level realize that, still getting a good deal, a real good deal, but I, personally, I'd be opposed to, to selling our facilities in, in, especially in the middle of our downtown, because at least we have the control, number one, of, we're going to keep it a certain way, and I think the way we've kept it over the years is very nice, and, um, I'm just, I just don't want to rely on, on an outside party, in this case, Anderson County, to, to meet those expectations that we have.
Yeah, and I just, I just was wanting to clear up any misconceptions that the public might have about what's, what's practical, what's been offered, what's not been offered.
Well, again, it's, I mean, we've offered, right, Roger? We've offered to rent, they can rent it for a dollar a year, it's not, we could use, still use it for the Optimus Field and let the kids still play on it, that's all we really use it for.
I'm a little biased, since I was recreation director before I took this job, you know, I think we have one of the best turf fields, natural turf fields, Coach Gann says, uh, in the area, but, and you don't realize, we don't start working on that field in August when the season starts, we started six weeks ago, and it's maintenance every week on the football field. Closer gets to summer and the season, sometimes it's two or three times a week.
And when the water is being watered, that's off the cities, that's part of the rent, that, that they are paying for that. You know, and my concern would be, with it being right in our downtown area, even at renting at a dollar a year, there would have to be stipulations that it maintain a certain status.
Correct.
I mean, like, right now, if there's any painting that goes on, again, that city staff that pays for that painting, I mean, that, that person's on the stat payroll here at the city, and city buys the paint, so...
Well, I mean, after the ballgames, the Recreation Department, they're getting, after the game, or the next morning, they, they would go in and clean the stadium.
Right.
I mean, that just takes money to do, and, and then you talk about who's responsible to pay you for that, well, it should be the county's.
And HR cost, I mean, insurance, and all that.
Concessions and maintenance.
Now, now, they get to keep some of the gate, I think, or all the gate, or...
Well, that's separate, that's...
That's how, so, yeah, right.
All we get is the rental.
All we get is the rental, so that's right, and that's the way, and that's the way it should be.
Anything else for Roger? Roger, you done?
Yes, sir.
Um, I want to speak on behalf of you guys, we really don't talk about that enough, but, and I've been on some, a couple interviews and, and public things, and, and first thing, I, I want to thank Roger for his leadership, especially during this time, because it's, it's a blessing, number one, that we talk about our fund balance, that, you know, how we've saved and been conservative over the years, now that, now we'd like to tell people this is the reason why, we didn't, we didn't predict a pandemic, but we, we, we predicted that it's going to slow down at, at some point, and, uh, Roger, you've done a great job, I, I try to tell that to everybody that, that I talk to, and you've got great staff with you, and, I mean, it's very comforting, you know, that Gail's going to do the right thing from a finance standpoint, and we're going to do the right thing for our citizens. So, uh, please pass that on to your department heads and staff, that, that we're, we're very blessed to have you guys.
Thank you.
Moving on, and...
And that goes with the schools as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The whole thing, I mean, where we've come from in the last 10 years has been incredible.
Scott, you want to talk about our twice-a-week phone calls, we had kind of show some continuity?
Well, you know, the, the questions that I've had is, you know, as far as how things are going on, and, and I'll, I'll repeat it, I, I, I've been really impressed with the communication we've had, and I say, you know, I'm, I'm, we're an extension of all of us, you know, I'm, but Roger and I have been on, we're, we're, once a week on, on a White House call, um, which I didn't, I didn't get on the one that President Trump was, got on it, and he spoke for a little while.
Yeah.
Um, and then we usually have at least one a week from the state, and we have two with the county, and I, you know, I, I really want to thank, I think Mayor Frank was the first one to really kind of get all the cities and the county together, and so consistency is, is where we need to be. I think it's important to, to lessen the, the confusion as much as possible to, to all of our citizens, and by doing these calls and making sure, what are you doing here, what are you doing there, just ensures everybody's on the same page. And, you know, I'm going to go back to, you know, the governor's announcement, I mean, I'm sorry, the Knox County, um, County Mayor Jacobs announced today as far as what their process is going to be as far as opening up, and it was inconsistent to what the state has delivered for, for the rest of the 80, 85 counties, 89 counties, that, um, I got a couple phone calls, because it, it created confusion. So, um, I've really been impressed by that, and I really, really talk about it as much as I can, because everybody in the county is on the same page, and, and I think that's very, very important. So, I want to put you on the spot, too, with resolutions, I want to ask you to just kind of highlight these when we get, when we get to them. Any other questions for Roger? Let me give you a second.
Yeah, let me pull them up. Go ahead, Gail.
So, um, resol, resolution number 792, the delinquent tax search fee, can you talk a little bit about that?
The, our city attorney asked for this, if you remember when he did the delinquent tax sale specifically for the city, um, this would allow him, um, to somewhat recoup some of the money that he spends on, on doing that, obviously, we pay the difference in that case, but because our property tax rate is so low, the percentage just doesn't bring in what it, what it takes for him to do title search on that, so that's all it does, is allow him to put an amount per delinquent parcel for his, his, um, public record search.
And that fee is $150.
Yes, per parcel.
Which is...
Who's doing that?
Phil.
Phil.
Can that not fall in his real responsibilities? I didn't renegotiate that. Here a motion for approval of Resolution Number 792.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Yang.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Stamen.
Yes.
Manhattan.
Yes.
Councilman Sayer.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, Resolution Number 792 passes. Resolution Number 793, this is the revised purchasing card policy.
We adopted a policy back in 2011 for our, we call it a purchasing card. It's a credit card. And I've just revised it to better reflect how we actually operate and our controls over those as we have progressed since 2011.
And Gail put this in place when she came in 2011. And essentially, what it did, department heads has the purchasing card. Before, we had maybe 50-plus accounts with people we deal with and billing and all of that. So now, we just simply use the one card for our vendors that we use.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Here a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Yang.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Stamen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Webb.
Yes.
Councilman Sayer.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, Resolution Number 793 passes. Resolution Number 794, this is the governor's local government support grant application.
That's the stimulus money that from, I guess, federal government down to the state government that we'll receive in July. We have to have the application in by April 30th. So this is resolution just pretty much approving us to file the application.
Okay. Here a motion for approval of Resolution Number 794.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Yang.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Stamen.
Yes.
Councilman Atkinson.
Yes.
Councilman Sayer.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, Resolution Number 794 passes. Any old business before us?
Can I get a green, a Magnet Mills update real quick, where we stand on that?
Right now, it's kind of been dead. I mean, back six weeks ago, you know, it was raining quite a bit. Jay Stokes had talked to them. They probably don't have three dump truck loads of being finished. With all the pandemic, we've kind of not really followed through anything in the last month probably on it.
It's understandable. But I think I speak for myself and perhaps one person. I was going to include another individual that's been vocal on this down.
You've been isolated too long.
But, um, don't, let's not.
He's been sheltered in place, hasn't he?
Let's not lose sight of that, because there's, I mean, I was, my vision was they would have nice grass. It would be mowed. It would be, look tidy and neat and presentable, which it hasn't.
I talked to Albert Harb last week, and he wanted to know if he needed to close his file on this matter. We told him no.
No. Absolutely not. All right. Thank you for that.
Any other, any other old business?
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Hock, did we receive another attorney bill from the last lawsuit we were involved in, or I was involved in?
Yes, we did. It was, I want to think, it was a smaller one. I mean, it was 975, but that brought the total up to a little over 32,000.
Wow. And that's just what the city paid. That doesn't include, school paid a couple thousand.
That's, that's, that's part of the election commission bill, too, isn't it?
Yeah, that's what it cost us. I know, I think the school had about 2,500.
Yeah, I thought they said.
So we paid 32,000 on behalf of the election commission for recitation in this lawsuit?
Well, combination of buyers and theirs.
Okay.
Yeah. Right?
Selection commission.
That was a whole election commission bill? I guess it's, it's pretty much done now, right?
You know, the appellate court gave a pretty good ruling in favor of Councilman Stamen. I think Mr. Young has 60 days from, I think it was March 23rd, something around that, to pop, to file an appeal with the Supreme Court. Of course, they don't have to hear it. They choose which ones they want to hear. I'm not sure what, what will happen.
Well, I think they gave a pretty good ruling two times ago.
Yes.
Keep on giving good rulings, so congratulations. I think we all kind of knew how that was going to play out.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah, yeah. Any new business for us? One thing I wanted to say, one more thing. Sorry, I've been cooped up for a couple of months. I got a lot to say. But anyway, one thing I did want to talk about is, is buy, buy local, support your retailers here, your business owners. They're hurting, big and small. So, you know, we've all preached about, we want this, we want that, you know, so on and so forth. We got to support what we have today for them to survive, but also to bring new ones in. So.
In the same terms, I like to brag on those people, because we've had zero problems with the governor's orders enforcing anything. I, early on, received three phone calls myself or either Chief Becker, went and checked them out. Not correct. The businesses were not open. Went on, the owner was in there cleaning. So our businesses and citizens have done very well.
They have, they have. We just need to continue to do that. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Means adjourn.